I believe we are ready. Let me welcome you to the August, to the September fourth study session. All board members are present. If you'll please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like the paid seats are full and the cheap seats are all empty. I think we'll just jump right into the strategic discussion. Norm, you want to take off and lead things?
Sure. Baldridge.
Right.
Okay. Oh, that needs to be turned on. That tab does not. There we go. Good evening. What we're going to be discussing in the strategic discussion is basically rolling from a reminder of the systems that we have, which is the Baldridge Continuous Improvement type of system, to help you understand and remind you what that looks like. And then we're going to move from that into strategic discussion, and that's really the strategic plan and the focus that we have there. And Mark Maynard did that. And ultimately, Dr. Goodman will be discussing with you the systems reporting that we would like to do and the plan that comes out of discussions we've had at cabinet level and what that'll look like. And we'll have an open discussion around that. We basically decided to do that today because this is really a critical time for us as far as having that conversation and also defining the different roles that the board has, the cabinet has, as well as other systems within our greater system. The thing that we really need to understand is that in continuous improvement, the Baldridge system is really focused on and helps us focus as far as the whole system is concerned. And really, the real person that we're really looking at is the student. And that is our primary customer. That is our primary person that we need to pay attention to. It's almost, it's really what I would call customized. As you heard last meeting, we're pretty bright at about 25,000, maybe a little bit over 25,000. So to customize for 25,000-plus students is very, very difficult. So you really need a well-aligned system to be able to do that. And so ultimately, what we need is, you know, what kind of results do we need to have and what kind of value do we have around those results? And really, as we look at a student and a student that learns, does the student feel value around what they're learning? Is the student engaged in that learning? And if the student is, feels value around that learning, do they feel value around the results? For instance, is the map test really tell them anything? It tells maybe the greater system something, but as far as the student is concerned, I do think the performance series does a better job. So we, as a system, are seeing that as a critical piece as far as results are concerned. We also are working through the learning model, and we're seeing the learning model as a critical piece as far as what that's going to look like ultimately when we have and we clearly define what those results are. So there needs to be value around the results, and every single one of our children, our students, needs to own and accept and be engaged in their learning to the point of where they feel a lot of value around it. Critical piece. Then ultimately, when we talk about the engaged customers, we're talking about the engaged students and what does that look like? And we're talking engagement from the kindergarten classroom all the way up through the senior and high school. And you walk our classrooms now, you're going to find that there's very heavy focus, heavy engagement going on in those classrooms. In fact, you're going to find that there's a lot of collaboration of student learning going on, collaboration of similar levels of learning, and that is really what helps with the engaged learner. What's really critical here is that we don't overwhelm the customer or the student in this case, and that we basically make sure we have a very strong focus on that. And so it's really important for us as a system then to make sure that our engaged learners have a very clear focus and, again, as I said earlier, keep strong value around results. The thing that we find that's interesting and there's a transition in education is that it cannot anymore be something that's a burden. It cannot anymore be something that's painful. It has to be something that has a sense of delight about it. It has something that has a sense of where you have accomplishment and it's short-term accomplishments to be able to meet that and become engaged. And so ultimately, what we have then as far as the engagement is concerned, I would say a very balanced, engaged ownership by the students as well as strong support and engagement and excitement by the teacher. And that's the workers. And that's not just the teacher. Excitement in the bus drivers, excitement in food service, excitement across the whole system. And they all need to be engaged and focused on meeting the needs of the student, but also challenging the student to help them have an appetite for learning. Ultimately then, we have what we call predicted outcomes or work processes. And we have to be careful that we don't overwhelm the customer in this case. What's really important is that the customer has ownership, the customer has buy-in, the customer then eventually knows what they need to learn, and we have processes that we eventually engage that child. And we need to be measuring the excitement for learning in both the work processes level as well as the engagement level. And so we constantly need to, what I would call, turn to feedback. Ultimately, what we have then is what I would call an optimum opportunity as far as high performing systems are concerned. Quote from an article that you had that I sent to you, it says, "A successful organization requires a strong customer-student focus, skilled workers, efficient work processes, fact-based decision-making, clear direction, and continuous improvement." It's a matter of always, always knowing that you must get better, you must get better. And that's a critical piece, and every single system we have within our system has all those pieces that are very important and tied into their systems. From the classroom, from the student to the classroom, to the site, to the divisions and the departments, to cabinet, and eventually to the Board of Education. And each of them has their own role. So the board system is basically a system that is working with policy but also holding the superintendent accountable and basically asking the critical questions on behalf of the community. That's the critical piece. The community is also part of the customer base. And so that's where the board a lot of times serves that role in asking that, those critical questions. What's really difficult there, of course, is we have the state, pardon my language here, interfering, I think, in the community learning as well as the national interfering in the community learning. And as far as the engagement is concerned, it's very hard for us to make it very clear to the student when you have the state requirements, you have the national requirements. But really, what's really exciting is that we are developing a system that really can identify the community's intentions, what the parents want, what the students want, and what the community wants for its children. Thing we're going to be talking about and discussing through Dr. Goodman is, and also with Mr. Maynard, and that is the dashboard. And what is critical data for us? What data is going to be critical for the student? What data is going to be critical for the classroom, for the school site, for the divisions and departments, for us as cabinet? And also, what's important data for the board? What, the data that's going on in the classroom and the detail of that data is, can feed into the board's data, but it's more general as far as the data that's required there. Leadership in a Baldridge system, leadership is not about control. Leadership is about serving. Leadership is about basically responding and supporting, guiding, providing vision and providing direction. It's all about being strategic. And that's what the school board challenge is, is to be visionary and to be more mission-driven and to really provide the type of philosophy that is needed and gives us clear direction as to where we're going to go. Mr. Maynard, I'll have that conversation with you. So at this point, what I'd like to do is, you could see, the critical piece as far as overall system is concerned is our strategic plan. Over the last four to five years, I would say that we in the district, beginning with the board and all the way through the system, has been focused, very focused on our strategic plan. We are in the midst of changing that strategic plan. Of course, we change it as far as measurements are concerned and leading indicators are concerned every year. But now I think we're looking at a pretty major shift in the strategic plan because of the demands of the community. And that's what we're going to have a little bit of a conversation around. And then ultimately, we're going to have a conversation around what it's going to look like as far as reporting to the board so that the board can hold us accountable for following the strategic plan. So really, what we have in front of us here is Baldridge. And Baldridge is all about visionary leadership. It's about being strategic. It's about getting feedback. It's about using data and very select with the data. It's about word process, it's about processes, it's about training around processes and helping the adult in the system as well as the student in the system. But ultimately, it's all about results. But what's interesting is, is it's got to be the right results that we're targeting and looking forward to. If you looked at the New York Times over the last three Sundays and you read the CEO's section in the Business Review, without exception, every one of them said, "The more targeted the business or the organization is, the clearer the goals, the easier it is for the employees and the customers to be satisfied and happy." And I think that's true for us as well. We need to make it very clear what the goal is, what our goals are. Need to make it very clear what the strategic plans are. And then we need to make sure that we don't have an overwhelming amount of goals. We really need to keep it to two or three and then build from there. So to have a little conversation with you regarding the strategic plan, I'll let Mr. Maynard take it from here. Mr. Maynard?
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. To start off, based on the discussion we just had around customer input, as a reminder, I'd like to share with you the process we went through over the course of the last year to ascertain what our customers were saying about our school district. And you see on this slide the specifics of the types of stakeholder input we utilized. And I would also point out that we had a first-ever graduate survey. We surveyed students that graduated six years ago from our system, which was very enlightening in terms of opportunities for improvement and some look back. And also, we did a randomly selected teacher survey. We do give IMSA surveys to our teachers. I received feedback from our teaching staff that they would like to see one that was randomly selected and have a little more confidence in that. So this was actually a phone survey conducted by opinion research specialists of our own teaching staff. So that's a major part of the groundwork of what we're looking at in terms of moving forward on the strategic plan. As always, customers are essential to being successful in a district, along with test scores, which we would obviously reflect in the strategic plan, but we have some very specific customer-related topics driven by these types of surveys. So the key findings from these surveys, overall, our district receives good marks on customer satisfaction. We should be very proud of how our public and certainly our parents and our teachers view our school system in terms of our main, primary responsibility of education. When we talk about, we've used the term efficient resources, effective and efficient use of resources for a number of years. As we drill down and talk to customers, what they're really saying there, in addition to the big fiscal issues that sometimes report in paper, those types of things, what they're really saying is making sure that you make decisions that impact the classrooms, that the dollars reach the classrooms. So that's something that we reinforce in SP5 as a measure in terms of our customers and what they say. Standards and expectations, it's interesting, our graduates from six years ago said that we could improve in that area in terms of setting higher expectations and standards, which, given some time, I think that's really interesting for them to say. And also, parents and graduates rank us 20% a little lower than teachers do when it comes to how they view we do on setting high expectations and standards. And I shared that with leadership at the beginning of the year to say, "This is a good opportunity for us to understand, you know, our customers are slightly, have a slightly different perception than our own teaching staff." And I think we have some answers to that a little later on I'll share with you. Supporting the teacher in the classroom should be the basis of investment decisions. I think you recall that the teachers gave us a little lower mark than we'd want to be on that particular area. That's a difficult one and one that we in the communications department are talking about how to address that. This is an area that, this text bullet is an area that really will be critical to the success of the district with the new strategic plan. And that is looking at the individual learner and looking at customization of learning. And what we hope to do with the new strategic plan is highlight that, but in addition to that, highlight the fact that that requires resources and that with a levy in the bottom third of the state, that may be, may be a challenge for us. Dealing with disruption in the classroom is a critical opportunity for improvement. This is something that I heard firsthand from teachers and also parents, how we deal with those students that are creating issues in the classroom, helping them with a customized learning plan, bringing some resources to bear. I think that's critical for success in the future. And then this last item, it really pertains to community support and how the community views we're doing on that particular area. So 50%, roughly, slightly higher for parents, slightly lower for frequent voters, think we have enough funds to operate our system. So one side, you say in our strategic plan, that really is a yellow area for us because over half of our parents and frequent voters think we need more funding. This also tells us that we have some communicating to do in terms of where we want to go from here and what we would need for that investment. So that's a really important finding for us on both sides. Key drivers and improvements, so this is something that Anita Kissinger used to talk about. What do you take from this input and then focus in on in terms of how you can most improve the system by focusing in on certain areas? Right off the top, I think this is important for credibility of our teachers is to talk about what resources and strategies do we need to bring to bear to help with those disruptions in the classroom. That impacts class size, that impacts a number of issues regarding student engagement and things of that nature. So a closer look at that, and I'll share some information in terms of how we're going about that right now. The action plans you'll learn tonight, we have a critical action plan that we need to work on, and we're looking at around an October completion date that combines the learning model, our digital plan, performance series, how we report out with the performance series, and then facility improvements. And that's targeted on the individual learner. How do we take those things and don't have silos but combine them, merge them so that's focused on the individual learner? We think there's some work, additional work that needs to be done in that area, and it shouldn't just be the learning model but all those things tied together. And we're working with Ed Services, Mrs. Moore, and Dr. Harrell, and Dr. Hackenworth and I are working together to address that in terms of the action plan. Enhance and increase public awareness and discussion of investment that goes back to what we will need additional funds from the public, class size, space, resources, teacher compensation, classroom support. We know those are all important to our frequent voters and to our community and to our parents. We need to make sure we develop some communication strategies around that. Continue to create learning experience for students. This is really about the viability of the marketplace. If you recall, we have an indicator in our SP5 that's about market competitiveness, which is important to us to continue to attract families to our district. And one thing that we know has really been a powerful tool for attraction to our system is the unique programming we have. So when you're talking about difficult budget decisions, I think it's also important to remember we have to invest in those types of programs as well because that's essential to our market competitiveness. And then this is, this is an area that really, parent-teacher communication along with parent-school engagement, the satisfaction rate with our parents on teacher communication is at 58%. So we can make reference to that as we talk about why is there a disconnect maybe between, with rigor and expectations? It might be some communication that needs to take place there. They may be necessary to look at a standard of communication we expect from all staff regarding parent-teacher communication. But at the same time, it's important to know we need to support the teacher in that area so they will have the time to do those sorts of things. So that's part of the action plan customization process that we're going through. So the new version of SP5 that we are still working on, but I anticipate in October that we'll have the pieces in place to go ahead and put the new dashboard up and things of that nature. I think the new version offers some better possibilities for us in terms of communicating our message and needs in the community. But we do have an increased number of measurements ongoing that I think allows us to look at trends that are developing, that takes into consideration a number of aspects. For instance, we never have measured and given ourselves credit for the fact that we have the unqualified audits every year. That's something that we should keep on a scorecard and to note. We're looking at different items like that from the health services, some specific goals that we feel like are important to student health. That's all going to be now measured, reflected in a scorecard, and I'll show you some examples of the scorecard in just a few minutes. Obviously, it's designed based on customer input Dr. Ritter mentioned earlier, and that's the strength of our system, is we have developed, I think, a very consistent way of listening to customers, reacting to that appropriately, and that continues with the new strategic plan. The flexibility to adjust and emphasize emerging areas, this SP5 will allow us to do that. It's designed for accountability and transparency. I think you'll see an example of that with the scorecards and the dashboard. And it's designed for a quick glance check of system with a dashboard as well. So district goals, student preparation, effective use of resources, teacher support, those are the three driving areas that we want to look at. Under each one, we have four indicators, student engagement, academic achievement, rigor and expectations, postgraduate readiness. And you'll note that these indicators are coming from our customers as well, high expectations in terms of they want us to see that we are setting high standards for our students. Effective use of resources, we have market competitiveness, resources supporting classrooms, safe and healthy environment and learning environment, professional learning, administrative support, instructional time and community support under teacher support. So the scorecards that you're familiar with in the past, which we worked on minimizing to a certain extent, we've increased the number of measurements that, some of these could be collapsed, obviously. These are for, this is the detail of our system. This is what we measure. It's a lot of moving parts in our system, and we're looking at trying to find measurements for those that have the biggest impacts of certain areas. For instance, student engagement, you'll see that I have the teacher survey, graduate survey, parent survey, and the IMSA surveys of students. We looked at every item that related to student engagement that we thought were the most critical questions, and we concluded, and we included those in our scorecard. The green areas, we feel like we're in a very acceptable range. The yellow areas, we have some areas for improvement, and we'll set the measures and start working on those throughout the school year. So you get a glimpse of how the scorecards have increased in terms of what we're measuring, including performance series to be determined, the customized learning model, the action plan that will come from that, graduation rate, obviously, athletics and activities plan, the types of action plans that we feel like help with student engagement will be there. The talent management implementation, that's from human resources. We consider that a critical plan in terms of getting the teachers we need to keep such an excellent system going. So you can see from the first particular scorecard that we have two types of measures, performance measures and process measures. The process measures are looking at what action plans do we need and what steps do we need to complete to be successful in those. I might add, if you go through all these scorecards, you'll see that we have placeholders for a levy or bond. And if those pass, then that contributes to a successful strategic plan. That gives the community some buy-in. If it fails, obviously, it drives our system in the other way. So there's a lot of transparency, a lot of accountability for both community and teachers and administration in this particular scorecard. You'll notice the right-hand categories, the way the scorecard will feed into the dashboard, and this will be a cabinet-level job, is to take a look at these measurements as they come in, and we will assign certain weights on those. For instance, you may have 20 measures, but there are certain measures that are more important than others. So those will impact our overall system and where we need to drive in terms of the dashboard reflecting those. So that's a quick look at the scorecard system we'll be using. And to reflect the indicators and goals. This you've seen before. This is how the dashboard will ultimately look. So all those measurements will feed into this particular dashboard. So you'll have three gauges that reflect the overall gains we made, the areas we need to improve in, and the indicator lights, which is a quick way for us to say, "Are we meeting the goals?" Or are we meeting the majority of the goals in those indicators? So this is a quick look at where we'll be, I think a year from now will be the most critical point of the dashboard because we'll have a full year of us striving to meet those goals, and then we'll be reflected on how we're doing in terms of our system. But this will be up in October online for the community to look at, and it provides them a quick look. Then they'll be able to drill down and look at the scorecards and say, "Okay, why, what areas do we need to improve in?" And certainly, if you look at this one, this is not the definitive final version, but I'll give you an example. For instance, on teacher support, you see a yellow light under community support. That's reflective of the fact that we have a levy in the bottom third in the state, and it's also reflective of perceptions of some of our key stakeholders that we need to do and more investment from the community. So until those particular items are addressed or we make some gains in those, those will obviously have an impact. I think it's important to reflect that and show that to the community as well. So there's a reason for those things, and the scorecard will reflect those. So the new SP5, a critical piece of this, we've had to put on hold quite frankly because of IMSA 5 and how we align with IMSA 5. Dr. Goodman has shared with us that he thinks that will be resolved in October. We can set those measurements and finish the scorecard. The completion of the customized learning action plan and facilities planning, those are two major action plans that need to be completed, and we'll have some gains in that. The long-range facility plan that Mr. Todes is working on will require a little more time, but that will be incorporated into our long-range, our strategic plan when those are completed. And then the implementation at site and departmental level, I think a criticism, rightfully so, of any strategic plan is, do your leaders, does your leadership know about it? And we'll have to work hard because it's a change in the way we're doing things. But ultimately, if we really want to meet customer needs, I think every school, every department should have its own dashboard so that they take in customers' input like we do on a district-wide basis, but they do it at a well or a department and use their customer feedback. So they, on their own website, they could have a dashboard that reflects those things as well and feeds up through our system. So I think that starts at working almost individually with leadership and working them through the new SP5 process so they'll have a better understanding of it. And then another aspect that we will be discussing at length here is the ongoing systems review. This is not mutually exclusive from the process of how do we become more efficient in our system? What information do we bring forward to reflect that we want to change yellow lights to green lights? And I think that's the most critical aspect for the community to know and the board to know as well. So that's tied into the ongoing systems review. And then the discussion subsequent to that is, how do we do the quarterly reports in the future? I envision it's going to be along the lines and tied into the ongoing systems review but also reflected in the dashboard and the key scorecard aspects that you saw I shared with you today so that you'll get a big picture of where the system's going and then also the small parts that have the impact on it as we move along. So that's the update on SP5. It will be completed in October in terms of going online with it, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have now.
You mentioned, you mentioned that there will be a weight given to different aspects of the scorecard. I guess I'm, I just have, need some clarification about who will determine those weights, and it's, because it seems to me that you said cabinet will do that, seems to me that the board should and would want to have some weigh-in on that because it seems like that really determines in a lot of ways what we're paying attention to and how outcomes are reported. So could you clarify that a little bit?
I can clarify up to a certain point, then Dr. Ritter would have to address the rest. But I would tell you from, from the standpoint of the surveys and the data that I've collected, there are a couple of ways that there are a couple of ways that the ranges are set. For instance, if you have a series of four questions about parents, about student engagement, and you ask them directly, is your student excited about learning when they come home from school? That's an engagement question. There are other things that tie into engagement that we'll ask, but we would, just to give you an example on a survey, we'd place more weight on that particular question and fold that into one, one response. So there's, that's a lot of minutia in that, but it's also a reason why you would want to place more weight on a particular question. The other thing that would be determinant, obviously, would be what we decide are going to be the critical aspects of performance for students. So on the performance series, if we place more weight on growth, that would have an impact throughout a number of, a number of our measures. And if we, if we determine that's the critical test approach we're going to use, then that would have more weight.
I guess my concern is when you say, when we determine, and it seemed like in the presentation that that would be coming at the administrative level, and it seems like if this is a strategic plan, that we as a board are responsible for, you know, really overseeing on behalf of the community. It seems like having some input on, on what's driving those results from the board level would be important. So maybe, Dr. Ritter, you can address that.
I really don't have a problem with that because you're representing the community. The biggest concern I have is we truly need to listen to what the community is telling us, and that's where the priority comes from. For instance, I believe you found in, in the focus groups as well as the surveys that really dealing with behavior, student behavior, seems to be a priority and pretty heavy weight. So that, to me, is something that the board could, you know, we could have the conversation, the board can have say, but, and of course, you're the final say because you're the people that basically pushing and controlling the strategic plan. What we're doing is just basically helping with the indicators and the measures with the strategic plan.
But I guess what I'm, because up to this point, we've gotten, we've gotten reports back on this process at various, you know, intervals, but we've never really been presented with all the data that has gone into creating this. And so I guess I would feel more comfortable, at least if the decision about where that weight's going to be is going to be administrative, I would like to see that data that's driving that reasoning.
Sure.
Because I think that, that's the piece oftentimes that I have to defend, or I have to promote, or I have to understand, and if I don't have all of that information presented to me comprehensively, it's hard for me to think back. A year ago, I got the information on the teacher survey, and, you know, six months ago, I got information on this. It's really hard for me to go back in the cobwebs and pick all of that out. So I guess what I'm asking is, before we are asked to approve this, it would be helpful for me to have really a comprehensive understanding of where, what's being brought forth to us. The justification, I guess, is what I'm asking for.
For what the staff and cabinet think are most important.
Yeah.
Sure.
I think an example of that is when I, we did share the results of the teacher survey, it was very evident which areas had dropped out of a range of satisfaction. And so, which, I'm speaking from the survey standpoint now. Keep in mind that there's also the perform, the process measures that we've included that would require some additional explanation of why we feel those are important. For instance, the teacher management, or the talent management process, why did we place so much emphasis on that? We felt like that was the best way to screen and track and hire the best teachers. So, you know, there's going to be a lot, there's a lot of minutia involved with the measurements. The critical, big-picture things, we try to capture with the goals and the indicators, but you, we could spend a good retreat going through all that, and if that's, if that's, you know, necessary, I think, very doable.
Well, it's, it's, it's the most important thing we do as a board, is, in addition to hiring the superintendent, is to guide the strategic plan for the community. And I guess I feel like if we don't have that background or that foundation, that it's really hard for me to do that, so.
Sure.
I would echo that. I mean, I, you know, I think this is, the goals and indicators, even the goals and indicators, I think we need to be on board with, you know, whether or not the board thinks those are, and I understand surveys, and I understand all these other things, but this board makes those, those decisions. Whether or not we agree with the survey or disagree with the survey, we're entrusted to make that decision. So I do think it needs to come back to the board and more than, than, than what we're One of the questions I have, and as I've talked to many of you before, it seems real clear to me that one of the most important things is making sure that we get our goals right. That is, that the goal is something, A, we want to reach, B, we need to reach. Because too often, we have, you know, No Child Left Behind gives us goals, and, and we, I guess we want to reach them, but we really don't need to reach them because they don't mean anything. So when I see something about increase something five percent, and I say, well, five percent's a nice number. Why not four? Why not six? It just seems like it's, some of that is just, let's throw it out there, let's do five percent. So I think it's really clear when we, as we move forward on this, that the goals that we set, and I think they should be from the board, the goals that we set are important, that we want to get there, and that we need to get there for our students. Tied closely into that is that I think it's equally important that the teachers understand and appreciate the goals. And if they're not in on the ground floor of designing those goals that are needed and important, then bringing them to the sites and saying, by the way, here's your new goals, and good luck, is the complete wrong way around. And I know you've spent a lot of time working on this, but I think it's, it's so critical that if, if they're not, if we approve this, and if, if, if teachers don't say, oh, I know exactly what you're going for, Andy, and I know exactly, I know it's important, and no problem. But if they say, oh, yeah, I heard from Mr. so-and-so that these are the new goals of the district, boy, you should have talked to me because that's kind of a stupid goal. And that's not what's going on in real life in the classroom. So as we go through this, I, I hope and pray that, that teachers are so involved in this that they're sick of being involved in this, and not that they're calling me up saying, man, goal eight B makes no sense in my third grade class. What's, what's the deal there? And we've got it out of some survey or something.
Right. Well, I don't, in, in, obviously, I don't disagree with anything you said. I will say that we spent a tremendous amount of time with teachers one-on-one in their classrooms, listening to what they had to say. And I'll give you an example, the disruptive student aspect. Because we spent so much time with our teachers, that has come to the forefront of the strategic plan. Whereas in the past, we may have taken a bigger-picture look and said, you know, here's what we think the key goals are based on stakeholders. But to discount the amount of work that went into listening to teachers and working with the teacher leadership, I think would be doing a disservice to what we have here as well. So not discounting the fact that we could always benefit from having increased design, but at a certain level, when you use a, I think, a proper approach to ascertain teacher input, which is the way we did it, a random survey using an outside entity, that's a pretty powerful way of saying, wow, here's what teachers are saying in terms of the big-picture things that.
And I agree. I don't, I certainly, I know the work you've done. I appreciate that. But I think also, there needs to be a lot of checkbacks.
Yeah.
Because we've gotten survey results, we've gotten some ideas, but we need to check back and say, hey, look, here's kind of what we're seeing, and make sure, because if there's not that ownership amongst teachers, then, boy, it's going to be tough to, it's going to be tough to reach these goals.
Right. And I think part of this, one additional strength of the new strategic plan approach will be that it's not this written in, it's not this written in stone, these are the critical measures from now until five years in. It's, it's an ongoing process that we could have some new emerging issues that you just can't put off. So they find their way onto the strategic plan, and we measure those and listen. So, yeah, there's ample opportunity for ongoing feedback, I feel like, with this in process. And I will say, having looked at other district's strategic plans, that I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a strategic plan in the state of Missouri anyway, from a school district that took the time to gather as much input as we do for our strategic plan. A lot of strategic plans are driven by administrators sitting in, in office going, oh, here's what we need to do with test results and move it here. So we're unique in the sense that we already have a tremendous amount of stakeholder input that most school districts don't have. Having said that, not to sound defensive about it, but at the same time, I think we're starting at a good point to get some additional input, unlike a lot of schools would be.
Yeah, I think the other thing there is, it's just not teachers, it's also parents. And a lot of times, you have parents view of something, teachers view of something quite different. And I think we had an example of that earlier. And the same thing is true for student input. See, so I think they're all really something we need to have conversations around, but also check back with them as well. So to me, it's just an ongoing thing. And I do think this is a breathing document that it's going to constantly change. You're going to see, and then we're going to adjust indicators and measures, leading indication, indicators and measures based on how the, the dashboard is coming across. So this is going to be constant adjustments.
And what should not be lost in the process of a strategic plan certainly is the fact that we have a couple of key issues that really have developed around our input, which are the disruptive student, the class size issue and space issue, and that focus on individual learner. Our marks on, do we understand the individual learner a little lower than we would like for them to be? And we also know that comes with investment on the community side. So that's the other piece of it, is this is, this is designed to show that there should be some community support as well, so.
It's going to be interesting to see how technology's going to be a factor in all that in the next four to five years, as far as each of those areas that you just talked about, as far as student behavior, as far as technology supporting the customization of, of the learner, and so it's just going to, I think it's going to evolve, so.
I have a question, and I believe I can hear the voice of teachers and some of the, some of the stakeholder input that you mentioned, and that was making sure dollar decisions lead back to the classroom, kind of my summary here, and supporting teachers in the classroom should be the basis of dollar decisions. So I just am very hopeful that this will reflect when we have budget discussions. And when we talk about disruptive behaviors, we see in our critical needs behavioral technicians and increased social workers and counselors and whatever we need. So can you assure me that that will be the next part to this, that we then see these, meeting these goals reflected in our budget requests?
Well, and I would say that that probably is a nice lead into Dr. Goodman's ongoing system review because those things are all tied into the, the budget process. And then, of course, before the final strategic plan is set forth and additional input from the board is given, and ensuring that you feel like it reflects what the direction you would like to go, I think that's going to be the final piece, how we tie all those things in together and do the budget process from here. And I, and you know, personally, you think with the strategic plan, it should be filtered through some of that key stakeholder input that are fact and not just, well, we heard this, but, you know. I think that's the nice piece about SP5 is that we took all that input and drilled it down to those critical aspects. I think that the public really would want, our key stakeholders would want to see reflected in the budget plan. And I would say that it's also a communication challenge. We do a lot of things that are really dedicated to impacting the classroom. We just have to figure out a better way to get them communicated internally and externally, and that's part of my, part of my department's responsibility as well.
That was really leading into what you just commented on, was how is this going to be introduced to the community? And how do you give them a look at the red, yellow, and the green lights? And what does it mean when they look at them? So how, what are we going to do, assuming all of this is, is passed and we take it? Who's going to take it? And how are we going to communicate it?
Well, I think, I think the most critical part of that would be, it takes time for something like this to be paid attention to, quite frankly. If you look at five years ago, six years ago, when we did SP5 the first time, I think it was successful, and we raised awareness that we had a strategic plan. I don't know that they knew every detail, but they certainly knew that classroom size is important, teacher compensation and air conditioning was important. So, you know, best-case scenario, to be honest with you, is they need to take away those key components from the general community and understand that we're working on them. That's the reason they support us. So when we do this externally and start working on it, the communication side of things, we'll emphasize those particular areas, and there will be some explanation around those types of things in terms of the red and green and how those are achieved. If you meet a green, it's simple. If you met a goal, it's green. If you make gains but don't reach it, it's yellow. If you go back the other way, it's red. I mean, those will be very visible to all our, our stakeholders because they can go on the website, look at the scorecard and see. But there, there's that pyramid of knowledge that you have to strive for in terms of awareness of the key issues in the strategic plan, down to the detail of cabinet and board level, or looking at the nuances in every measurement of it. And I think that's part of an overall communication plan that we'll, we'll obviously follow. I don't know that we'll do TV ads this time like we did six years ago. Quite frankly, we don't have the money, the foundation hasn't supplied the money, and I'm not sure that's the best expenditure, but we'll use new communication channels to achieve that.
I guess I just, I want to reinforce something, I guess you said, Mark, and maybe Ms. Twitty, and this is a long-term process that we're in this for the long haul, and you're not going to see this meeting is going to be a yellow, and we make a decision, it's going to go green the next meeting. I mean, you may be talking two years, three, I, I don't know. And I think that's something that your challenge is going to be, and ours, is making sure the community, everybody under, the stakeholders understand that this is a tide-changing effort, not, it's just going to happen like that.
Correct.
And, and that's hard to do. I mean, I mean, you do a tax levy, and you get an increase, and they want that results immediately. Well, it doesn't happen that way. I mean, this is a culture change that we're talking about, and, and so I really think that's something that we as a board have to be very cognizant of, that it doesn't turn, you know, this battleship doesn't turn around on a dime. And, and that's something we got to keep pressing and moving forward, and as Mr. Hosmer said, the key to that is the goals, and having consistently working those goals and what those are year in, year out, and that they're longstanding effort. And I, I just think that's, I can't reinforce the fact that this is not an overnight success. This is a changing culture that's going to take time, and we have to be somewhat patient but persistent to see it happen.
The persistence to graduation took us five years. It really did. And it basically started with the facilitators at the site, and then there was a lot of tweaking and adjustments, and it's really fantastic right now. And it just basically was a single focus, boom, everybody going that way from kindergarten, preschool, all the way through. So there's an example. It took five years, so, anyway.
You know, I think, I think to summarize and let you sit down for a little while, what you're going to hear from us is, what, one, one bullet pointed there was the strategic action plan. Now you've given us this information, put it together with the learning model, put it together with the facilities review, the performance series, the budget piece, and, and let's not just measure, but then let's act on it. And, and I think that's where you'll find the board will, will be fairly rigorous and demanding in their expectations and questions. Dr. Goodman?
Thank you.
My connection this evening is to provide an update on the program evaluation redesign that we've been undergoing, and we're very excited to present it with you this evening. From the perspective of how we're going to go through the content, we want to give you a sense of where we've been with the project timeline. We'll do that in a visual form. Then we want to spend just a little bit of time of talking about the purpose of this redesign process, give you an example of some sample templates as to how it might look, and then lay out potential process for transitioning to this title of ongoing systems review. So that's kind of one of the key takeaways this evening is this idea, in the past, of program evaluation, that we're proposing to shift it to the concept of ongoing systems review, and I'll bring across this evening what that would entail. So to understand the process and to give you kind of a sense of where we're going and what this might look like in this redesign of the program evaluation process, we see the following flow chart laid out in front of you. And the biggest shift here is this idea of what we are, are terming a cabinet systems report and a presentation. and a presentation accompanying that, which is coming out of a Cabinet's Ongoing Review Process of Programs, Departments, Systems in the larger system. And so, I'll have you up to speed on all these components by the end of our time together. From the perspective of timeline, this has been undergoing for a little bit under a year. We actually began in last November going through the APQC Training Process for PPM, Process Performance Management. The team members, the teams were designed to be cross-functional. So, this was not just my team, the Quality Improvement Accountability Team, it was actually cross-functional. And so, you can see on the bottom there, those participants, I was the project lead, but it's actually Rod Owen in Custodial Services and Ms. Jennifer Reniger, Curriculum Math Facilitator. And so, we were cross-functional in that regard, and we were kind of centered on and challenged with this redesign process. Over the course of that time, we met weekly for two-hour sessions into May, and it really did take that long to kind of get through here. And then, myself as the project lead, I had ongoing consultation with my supervisor, Associate Superintendent for Educational Services. And so, in getting here, feedback was an important part. And kind of think about it in terms of cycles, a lot of cycles with district leaders, program leaders, and with Cabinet, as well as Dr. Ritter and Mrs. Kissinger at the time. And then, that has transitioned with Mrs. Moore in her place. So, when we get here then, we can see May, June, and July has really been kind of the final parts of making the build and seeing that this thing can happen and can work. So, what is the purpose and what we're trying to get at? Well, the purpose of an Ongoing Systems Review, or as you'll see it after this slide, symbolized as an OSR, add a new acronym to our vernacular, is to provide the superintendent's cabinet a standardized and ongoing update of the goals, targets, and key drivers to SP5 at the program level. So, there you begin to kind of see how this connection fits with what Mr. Manus just previously shared. And we knew at the time, even in last October, or last November, that SP5 would be undergoing this revision process. So, it was really kind of a natural time for these two to come together. And so, the Ongoing Systems Review then are providing this standardized ongoing update of those goals, targets, and drivers at the program level. So, what's that mean for our programs across the system in light of some of that content Mr. Manus just shared? Additionally, Cabinet will use a defined protocol to review the evaluations and use those findings from these reviews to make policy and budgeting recommendations to the Board of Education. So, this data at the program level will drive fundamentally policy and budgeting pieces coming forward. Components in the build include really kind of five sections. And you may think about the formal report of a program evaluation in the old way as kind of a standard report, ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty pages that was fairly consistent in terms of its template. This form looks different. And so, we'll talk about the form in a minute. But before we get there, this is then kind of what the big rocks of these reviews would entail. And so, imagine then if you would, we have a program or a department. We would provide an overview of those programs departments, including their mission, their vision, the collective commitments, a description, what is the program, what is the department's intention, what are they designed to do, what function do they serve? We would note any issues of compliance that the programs serve for the system. The matrix timeline reflects a very brief, almost Twitter-like history of the program. I'm not going to call it one hundred and forty characters or less, but something thereabouts, very brief. What were some of the big rocks, the major milestones for the program across, say, a three- to five-year period? SP5 alignments would be explicitly articulated and expressed in the documentation, so you could see those connections. And then, the integration framework is to really draw a connection to understand where this program fits within the larger system as a whole and what kind of the logic is in terms of the services provided and how does that affect the system in thinking in terms of Mr. Manus's comments, leading to the school, the classroom, and the student. And so, we've got a couple of different options that we're investigating on that. We haven't completely settled on what that framework would be, but we do have some options. The second component would be the measures and what we would call KSMs, the Key Success Measures. These KSMs are much like what Mr. Manus just shared with the indicators. And we would also have a placeholder for any relevant discussion on variance where program leaders could write to that. There would be targets of green, yellow, red with those numbers associated with them. And there would also then be a historical track of the strengths and opportunities for improvement that the program has noted off of their goal work. We would bring in the finance piece from the budget book. And on those budget book pages, it would essentially be a replication, a screen grab of those. And that does contain both a current and a historical perspective. That would be a new component. If you think about the content of the previous program evaluations, that finance piece would be a new addition from just a content perspective. There would then be an action planning section for the programs to respond to where the opportunities for improvement or other aspects are addressed by the program lead and their cabinet members' input. And then, one thing that was real important as we solicited the input and the feedback of our program leaders on this redesign was this idea of feedback. And so, we've given a placeholder for that, too. And that's a feedback from Cabinet to the program leader directly about the performance and the work of the program. So, we've built that into the process as a placeholder for Cabinet to provide feedback back to the system. That was something we heard very clearly from program leaders. So, what will that look like? And again, these are template samples. There could be slight adjustments, but we envision something along these lines. The process would be represented by the programs using Excel documents to capture their data. Those Excel documents would be linked to a standard boilerplate template of a PowerPoint that they would fill in the blanks or that their measures would feed into, to where they enter the data in the Excel sheet. It then, it's like a series of dominos. It triggers this domino, which knocks this one, which knocks that one. And so, what you would see here is we'd see an Excel sheet where there would be a summary sheet, a scorecard, if you will, at the program level, and then the accompanying goals for a program. So, this one, we noted two goals, but there could be three or four, five, however many goals that are running in there. Conditional formatting will be used on the setup. And we'll talk about how are leaders and programs going to do this? We'll talk about the support we're going to offer them to make this happen. The goal sheets will have all of the data for the indicators and measures associated for those goals. And the data for that most recent year will pass to the summary sheet, which is what you saw on the previous slide. So, what is in here goes into what's in there. And what makes this kind of a more efficient process for the program lead is that they update the data once and all of the dominos fall. That will then link to the PowerPoint piece. This is kind of the template design, if you will, what it might look like. And the important piece is that it'll be consistent across all programs undergoing this Ongoing Systems Review Process. The data will be linked in, and so, there will not have to be a lot of time spent on the build. And the reason that that's important is because, when we get to the process here in a minute, the cycles of these are going to be ramped up in much more frequent rotations than previous program evaluations. One of the documents coming out of that program review, this Ongoing Systems Review, is what we're calling an OSR sheet, an Ongoing Systems Review Summary. And we envision these sheets being completed for each program that's reviewed for the month. We'll talk specifics in terms of numbers momentarily about how many we're talking about. But we would envision this type of summary document per program coming to the board. And what's important to note there is, you know, some of the just summary pieces, key strengths, opportunities, next steps, but then consistent financial considerations to be brought across. And then, up in the upper right-hand corner, it's a little hard to see, I should have put a box around it, but you see a hyperlink. That would be a link to the full PowerPoint template that you just saw. So, while Cabinet would be having this summary document coming out of it, there would be a link to get to the full piece, but it wouldn't be the full piece that's formally coming page after page after page. So, that'd be one component that would come forward to the board. And then, the second piece that would accompany that would be the KSM summary sheet. So, that kind of at-a-glance scorecard of the goals, indicators, and measures at the program level. So, we would envision those two pieces coming forward to the board with, as I noted, the option to hit the link to go more into the detail. So, then we reach the spot of how do we bring this forward? And so, we propose bringing it forward with what we'd call a Cabinet Systems Report. And this Cabinet Systems Report would reflect a summary report highlighting the key findings from the programs reviewed as a part of that month's OSRs. We'll get to the specifics momentarily, but we would have many more of these. And so, what we envision is that a summary of the findings across the programs would be brought forward while all of the accompanying detail is still provided and supported as well. And in thinking back to previous processes, this actually is somewhat similar to how we approached the quarterly report, where we would have the full quarterly report brought forward. However, if I was standing up in front of you, it would just be a summary of some of the key findings coming out of that month's report. Now, there were other components we did not go through page by page, line by line, every chart and figure and measure in the quarterly report. However, they were prepared and available for your use. Thinking about deployment, what are we talking about? Well, we've got forty programs. And these programs were identified going through the budget book, looking at where dollars are at from a program perspective. When we compare, we really have to get our feet underneath us. So, the full cycle that would go live in thirteen, fourteen is a little bit different than the cycle we proposed to do for this year, twelve, thirteen. And that's because we have to work on setting the goals, we have to work on helping programs make the build. Cabinet has to get their feet underneath them in terms of the process for handling and working with this many. But it would be forty programs either time. In twelve, thirteen, all programs would go once to Cabinet. However, in thirteen, fourteen, and thereafter, all programs would actually go twice. So, Cabinet would review the programs once, basically in the first semester, and a second time in the spring/winter semester. That's where the twice piece comes through. We see the first month the Cabinet receives these Ongoing Systems Reviews this year being November. So, that is an aggressive timeline. However, we think we can shoot for that. However, normally thirteen, fourteen going forward, the first one would actually be in August. And I'll show a calendar in a minute to show you the cycles these will pass through. There is a delay of Cabinet engaging with them and processing through them and then the next month that comes to the board. So, that's why then the first month the board would receive would be December this year, September going forward. And board would receive that Cabinet Systems Report monthly. However, again, it would have the summary sheets, the OSR summary sheet, and the KSM summary sheet for all programs reviewed. And then additionally noted, kind of that maroon bullet at the bottom, as when we think about going forward with these, dedicating some additional time at a couple of study sessions a year, we just put in an approximation there, you know, approximately forty minutes for board and cabinet discussion around important systems. So, if there was something that needed to be discussed in more detail that the systems report, you know, standing portion of the agenda didn't entail, we would have a couple of placeholders for those to go moving forward. When we think about the cycle, we can think about it in terms of our X, our delta, and our Y. So, essentially, we would break these forty programs into four groups. Matt, there, we'd be looking at ten a month going forward. So, Cabinet would review ten programs each month. Department leaders would submit their data at the end of the month. That's where the X falls. So, if you were in Group One, our ten in Group One, submit the data at the end of July. Cabinet reviews them in August. Board receives the summary report with all the accompanying data in September. October, you're getting the next round. November, the next. December, the next. And then, the cycle begins again from the board's perspective, February. We did put in May both an X and a Y in that case where that would also have to be the summary, potentially a summary spot if it needed to be reviewed all again before heading into the final components of budget work. So, then we come back to the process that was shared before. And so, this hopefully will make a little more sense then. So, the process we propose is that the program leader submits their data. Cabinet then reviews the data and the Ongoing Systems Review programs for the month, those ten. A Cabinet Systems Report is generated, as well as the program OSR and the KSM sheets, and prepared for the board. Those will be shared with the board and available in board docs. Then, board would receive this Cabinet Systems Report and OSR materials for the next meeting. And then, we'd have an item, if you will, much like we did with the quarterly report, where you'd receive a presentation of that summary work, but then also having the supporting materials available as well. To give a sense of who we're talking about and how we're talking about them, and sorry for the typo there, that should be forty where it says the forty-one programs, it is forty. We can see a distribution across Cabinet as such. We all welcome Mrs. Moore to the organization when we shared these distribution of programs. And so, at that point, happy to take questions regarding the proposed process for the OSRs.
Mrs. Moore is still here, right?
Yeah.
Questions, Ms. Callan?
Phew, that's a lot of information. I guess I'm interested in, it seems like ten a month for the Cabinet to review and then for the board to also review. It seems like a lot of information. Is that scheduled being proposed so that each program can be reviewed twice in a year? I mean, is that the reasoning?
Yeah.
Okay, and what is the reasoning for them to be reviewed twice a year versus once a year? I guess maybe I missed that.
Sure. Well, in general, as we look at programs and kind of understand kind of how programs work in terms of their data, the data will come in at different cycles of the year. And so, this would allow, I mean, there'd be kind of an assumption that the first round may not have all the measures populated for a given program the first time. And/or, if programs are using more leading indicators or they actually are measuring them more quickly, they may have been yellow in the fall, but it has gone green in the spring. So, it tries to get at that timeliness. And I should have also clarified, I completely left this part out, that the proposal is also from my department to work hand-in-hand with each program leader to get them comfortable and work through the process of establishing goals, indicators, and measures, as well as helping them build the Excel files and linking those to the PowerPoint piece. That was an important piece of the process that I left out. I wanted to bring that across to you.
And I guess it just, if we want that information to be of value to us as a board and be able to use those study sessions to talk about that, whose responsibility will it be to draw out that data from each of those program reviews? How will we know when it rises to the level of that we want to talk about it here? Will it be up to individual board members to do that? Will it be up to officers to, you know, discern that? Again, it seems like there's the opportunity for information to go by the wayside if people are not really paying attention to what we want to be paying attention to.
So, my first response is that when we think about the flow chart idea here with the process is that we really envision similar flow charts representing each of these spots on the chart. That there will need to be the establishment of formal processes for really each of those steps up there. And so, in direct response to your question, who will be pulling those out, that will be Cabinet. Now, the protocol piece as to how we'll get there in criteria, we may look to some of the work we did with quarterly reports in terms of operationally-defined strengths, opportunities, areas needing further study. Or, we could be looking in a different direction. We have not really dug into any of these formal processes here because we wanted to bring to you the proposal for the big thing before we hopped into any one of the boxes and really started to break it apart.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of flexibility once we start.
And that may be what I'm a little concerned about is too much flexibility. You know, who gets the, I mean, does one board member get to determine that we discuss one program review in more detail than we do others? I mean, I guess that's the piece that, as I hear this, I think it's great. I think the consistency will be fantastic. I think the timing of how things, you know, the fluidity and the consistency of how that information comes. But I just, I wonder how we as a board will determine how we use that information, how we process that information.
I think we need to, that's an ongoing conversation, I really do. I think we need to get started, but I do think.
Ongoing versus having some idea of where we're headed before we start in would be helpful to me.
I mean, I would propose that as a starting point on the final symbol there on the right, Board Receives Presentation Cabinet Systems Report. At Cabinet, we've already discussed this. I'll be the one bringing forward the report to the board. However, those findings will come from full Cabinet discussion of the Ongoing Systems, the ongoing looks at the Ongoing Systems Review. So, there would be some precedence there where we would try to identify some of the more relevant or salient points on the upfront per Cabinet's perspective as a way to begin framing that as opposed to what questions might you have? You know, we would try to kind of structure that because we recognize that it is a lot, a lot to get through from a detail piece each month.
Other questions? Ms. Hosmer?
I guess that's kind of an overarching question. I know that part of this came from, this Systems Review in part came from the board wanting to look at these things in more depth. So, my question becomes, I guess, why is this a good thing for the district? So my question becomes, I guess, why is this a good thing for the district? And it appears to me that, and again, I, I like this idea, but, but it appears to me that, that we're putting more time burden on a program leader, and maybe more time burden on Cabinet. And so, I know Mr. Ritter always asks, what's taken off the table if, if you're adding that, what's taken off the table? Because I don't know that people work smarter and just continue to do more and more stuff that if you're, as Chris said, I mean, if you're, if you're getting too much, then something else is going by the wayside unless you're taking something off. So how is this going to make, if in fact, there are benefits to this, and I'd like you to kind of talk about that.
Sure.
But if in fact there are benefits, what's going to be taken off the plate of Cabinet or program leaders, or where are the efficiencies to allow this to be seamless as opposed to this to be chunked on?
Another thing.
Chunked on to other duties?
Right. So, from a benefits perspective, I think, I think this idea of standardizing the process across the systems is one benefit that we expect to have. Dr. Ritter conducts meetings with essentially all, those forty programs, he essentially meets, I won't say all, but I'm thinking it's pretty close, in terms of those program and department leaders. And I know that there's been an expectation of those programs and departments having goals, indicators, measures, and data to accompany their work that he discusses and checks with them on. So that, that piece of the work is not particularly new. Now, it will be a change, it will be no doubt different for everyone versus how they've done it, and that will be stressful, we know that that would be the case with any change. And so that's where we propose that our department will help to hopefully mitigate that, make that, you know, almost kind of hold hands to get, help them through that process, in the idea that we will actually, should make it more efficient for them to just be entering the data in one time after they get it, and being more systematic in that collection in kind of a, a safe way, you know? It, I mean, it's, it's, I wouldn't propose that this is just going to be easy, like flipping a switch and we'll have our feet underneath us. We'll, we'll have to kind of grow into it to be as efficient as possible, and I say that, you know, on the front end of it before we've even done it, but I mean, we do know it's an, an uphill climb, but I think the benefit in that way is that we'll see that consistency across the system from a program perspective. Dr. Ritter?
Yeah, I think the two things that we're looking at, of course, as I mentioned earlier, is the performance data, which is, you know, that's an obvious one, but the process data really hasn't been scrutinized well enough, and I think the process data is going to be much easier for us to scrutinize as a Cabinet. Currently what's happening is we have the, the leader, as well as myself, maybe being aware of, we need to have an intelligent, as far as, increase the intelligence of the Cabinet, I'm not saying they're dumb, but anyway, increase the, the intelligence of the Cabinet by making sure we have that large group to conversation. Now, I think that there's going to be some streamlining going on, because we're talking about forty programs. I would say there's a number of those programs, for instance, the mailroom, I, I don't know how we could spend any time in the mailroom. I mean, we can go there and spend time, but I mean, as far as reviewing the mailroom, but that's one of the forty. And so there's a number of those that are like that, that we could streamline and probably look for another way to do that. But most of this needs to have a very sharp, intelligent conversation going on at Cabinet. Cabinet is of the level right now where they don't have a problem telling the other Cabinet member, wait a minute, this doesn't make sense. They, they do challenge each other, and I do think that's going to be an important part of this process, if I may say so, so.
Other questions?
I think, I mean, I agree with Chris, if, if we don't, I think forty programs for us to even understand, because I couldn't name the forty programs. So for our system to work efficiently and get to the three goals that we have, we've got at least forty programs that have to work together and make it all work. And I don't think most constituents, parents, students, even Board members understand forty programs working in silos will not make this system work. And so how do we make this work together, and what emphasis do we put on those? But they all, the mailroom has to work efficiently, or else we're, we could be in trouble. But, so I think that's this awareness issue the first time through of what the forty programs really are, and what they're looking at, and is going to be essential for me, I'll just speak for me, as a Board member, to say, you know, okay, so here we are, it's forty programs, and they've all got to work together, and they've got to make sure they're working so that we can have the individual student achievement, which is one of the goals out there, or efficiently using our resources. Forty of them have to make that happen. But I do think somewhere along the line, and I don't know who's responsible for doing this, I don't know if it's going to be Board members saying, here's what, as we get, we haven't gotten the reports yet, so I don't know, maybe this is too early, but to be able to say so that we can be efficient and effective with our time, here's what we've really got to look at as we're receiving these reports. Because otherwise, I'd agree with her, we, we could be, I think, discussion at the Board tables is extremely important, but I think we need to be able to agree of what we're going to focus on so we can have really good in-depth discussion rather than picking just little individual things out that we want to do. So I think this first time through, only doing it one time a year is going to be valuable, but I do think we need to, I don't know when the right time is to say, what are we going to focus on when this first report comes out in December? I think that was right. You know, when they show up in December, what are we going to say? Or what are we going to look at? And maybe, maybe by the time we get through to May, we'll have a better idea, but I, I hate just to start wading through in December without some kind of plan.
Sure.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking back, I think this is kind of something that we asked for.
Yeah.
And so here it is. And it's, and it is a lot to digest. Maybe it's something that could come up in retreat discussion, but I appreciate it because after going through the quarterly reports that we had, they became very different, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Frederick, but you used to do some of those. And I'm, I'm going to be, I think it's going to be very, very good to have them back to a format and an expectation that all forty, or how many ever it is that are reporting, are reporting on the same types of, of content. Because we would have them come forward to us before, and we really didn't have any questions. I mean, we're like, we, we read them, they were good, they got a green light. So, I think it's very good, but I think now the work's in front of us, we asked for it, here it is, and we're going to have to decide how we're going to have these discussions, because forty minutes on ten topics, if we were all allowed to pick, there might be just one thing that Mr. Hesmer loves, and something I love, and, you know, our forty minutes is gone. So, I, I'm excited about it, but I think it's going to be something for us to sort out.
I think one of the things we need to keep in mind too, is we're all not going to understand all the details of forty programs. But I think the comfort level that I think we were striving for is somebody is asking the tough questions for the programs, which I'm not sure happened before. Now, whether that's we're asking the tough questions, or Cabinet's asking the tough questions, I'm not sure, you know, I'm hoping that the tough questions are being asked over there at that table before it ever gets to here. That's where it should be, the really hard questions, because if we're asking them and we're right, somebody missed the boat. And so, you know, I, I'm not going to become an expert on custodial services or a program, and I don't think we need to be in that detail, but I think we need to have a really, really strong comfort level that somebody's asked the tough questions and looked at it, because in May, we're going to ask those questions from a resource standpoint, and somebody better have some answers, because when it gets down to it, if the answers aren't there, there's a program at risk that's, may not stand up to something. So I, I think that, you know, while we may go through the year trying to look at forty, we're not going to get into the weeds on all forty of these programs, but when it gets down to May, when we have to start allocating resources, that's where you hope those tough questions were asked, and those improvements made or changes that occur, if you want longevity in the programs to, to continue. And I think that's a comfort level that we need as a Board from the staff position, or from Cabinet, that that's being done, you know, whether it's prioritizing or-
Well, I, I'm looking at these, and I, I think I can look back and see that there's about five there that I wrote at one point in time, and helped with several more, but what I like about the proposal you brought forward is that, the consistency. And I know many times when I was in your role, Dr. Goodman, I had people call and say, can you give me some help with what this should look like? You know, can I see past program evaluations? So you try to provide that assistance, but no real consistency, and here's some title headings, but then you write the narratives as you see necessary. So, as a result of that, we got a lot of variety, and I think that the format that you have set up, I think as a Board, we will eventually get used to, we'll know exactly where to go, to look, to see what information we want or we need, and they'll become familiar enough that we will be able to do this on a pretty quick process. That's what I hope, because it was difficult then for me when I became a Board member to look through all the different program evaluations and find the pieces of information that I wanted or needed, because they were scattered throughout different places. So, I like the consistency part of this, and it looks like you have some of the key information we need within this data sheet. What did you call it, your, the key?
The OSR. We got the, there's your key measures. So you'll have a, a scorecard of the program, and then you'll have a summary of findings, essentially, with a link to the full batch of results.
I'm going to challenge the Board here, I think Mrs. Twitty hit the nail on the head, this is exactly what we asked for. And, and so we're going to have to ride with this for a while, and develop our comfort level with it, decide are we getting too much data, are we getting too little data? We're going to have to communicate back with you and with Cabinet of this data is not important to us, this data is important to us, let's streamline things. We're going to have to decide how we want to question you every time one of the forty programs come up. Do each one of us want to give a speech, or do we do something differently with it? So I, I think it's going to be, we, we could have city council meetings here and stay till, you know, midnight. So I think it's going to be a challenge for all of us to decide how we want to use the information, how you want to present it to us, how we want to gather the data, and what we want to do with it. So I just recommend everybody kind of go with the flow for a little while, and let's get a comfort level.
Well, we need the consistency, if it's coming to us consistently, we have to, and I guess that's the point I was trying to make, is we have to develop a way that we consistently look at it.
And we may end up at a retreat, we may end up having a retreat to talk about that very issue.
I think we've made, I think the positive thing here is we've gone from what's been somewhat program reports to hopefully program evaluation, true program evaluation and analysis.
Yep.
So I'm hoping that all the data that we're going to see is going to be productive, good, informative data, as deep as it may be, but it will, to me, it will mean a whole lot more than it has in the past where, because I've got to make decisions about it at some point, so.
You get the last word.
I was just going to say that basically Cabinet is the one that's going to benefit the most out of all this, because Cabinet is going to have a conversation about each program, and we haven't done that before, and we really never have ever done that. And so I think that's going to be the major, major, because that's where the scrutiny's going to be happening, as Mr. Lee said. So I, and, so then eventually, we report to you, and that's where we're going to have to let you tell us, hey, wait a minute, we're, we're getting too much, or can we get a little more on this detail here? So, anyway, I suggest we move it one program at a time, and system, not program, system at a time, and then we'll see how we do.
Dr. Goodman, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Stuff, lots of stuff.
If I may say, Dr. Goodman's been, he's been all over the place as far as the different types of things that he suggested. Cabinet, I think, has changed it. I've changed it about three times, Cabinet about four times, so appreciate your flexibility.
Thank you all for your work you've done on this. I don't believe we have any public comments, and we have no information items, so we can move on to 5.01 action item, Dr. Heckenhoff.
This is an item that we alluded to a little bit last week when we met. This is a request for additional elementary FTE. The administration's requesting the addition of one elementary teacher FTE and three paraprofessional FTE. This is in response to greater than projected elementary enrollment. The new FTE will be used for an additional kindergarten classroom at Williams Elementary. The para FTE will be used in several of our schools that currently have oversized classrooms and no para support. So it's the administration's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the addition of one elementary teacher FTE and three paraprofessional FTE in response to our enrollment increases.
Questions?
Let me just, didn't we in the budget, so this is in addition to the additions?
Yes, yes.
Because didn't in the budget, we said, we already, so this-
Is there one above that? Yes.
Even over and above what we've even projected?
How many did we add already in the current budget year?
We added ten elementary FTE, and I don't believe there are any additions to para FTE.
Well, not para, no. Secondary, we added, how many did we add to secondary?
Six.
Six.
I was asked that yesterday, I didn't know the answer. And at this level of addition, staff addition, does, where does that keep our class size?
Oh, I, you know, I will tell you, at, at Williams, where we're putting the FTE, they are still going to have relatively large class sizes in those kindergarten, first grade classrooms, twenty-five and twenty-six, and, and that's an improvement.
Where are we, where are we putting them?
At Williams.
Where are we putting them?
Yeah.
She, she's been creative in, in coming up with space. At Williams, they do have two classrooms on the stage, a music and art classroom that are sharing time on the stage, and she's doing some other creative things to find the space.
Was it three years ago, four years ago, Williams' numbers were down a little bit, but?
She's not having that problem right now.
Okay. Any other questions? I would take a motion to approve the addition of one elementary FTE and three pairs in response to enrollment increases. Dr. Frederick?
I'd-
Mr. Lee? And we'll have final enrollment numbers-
End of September?
End of September, yeah.
I'll be first to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we also need to do some research to make sure that this isn't just a blip on the radar screen as far as responding to the recession or whatever it is, because we can't continue to be real tight in our classrooms without making some major changes somewhere. So we're going to talk to homeowners as far as the associations and things like that, just to kind of see where we're at with sales, real estate.
Well, I think when you present the enrollment numbers, it's going to be helpful for this Board to see where in the, in the district the enrollment numbers are, are going up. Mr. Chodes?
Thank you. Roberson, the new community school currently sits on three acres, which is well below our standards for green space. This is reflected by the fact that six of our, only six of our schools have less than four acres. Additional land could be used for future expansion. Right now, Roberson's at one hundred and thirty-nine percent of capacity. Additional land could also be used for improved parking, traffic flow, support for the community school concept, a place for kids to play, et cetera. There are five houses that currently sit on the south side of the Roberson School. Obtaining those five houses would allow us to acquire the whole block. Previously, the Board approved the purchase of three of those houses. Before you is a request for purchasing the fourth house at North Taylor. The owner has requested a purchase price of eighty thousand, and at this time, we're asking that the Board approve the purchase of the house and the lot.
Questions for Mr. Chodes? Ms. Callen?
What's the appraised value of that property?
It was seventy-seven thousand.
I would take a motion that the Board approve the purchase of the house at twenty-three oh-three North Taylor for eighty thousand, and closing to be signed by the superintendent.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mr. Lee?
Could we, and where the money's coming from is?
The, the plan at this time is that that money will come out of unspent- The plan at this time is that that money will come out of unspent, uh, budget.
Who are you missing?
Me.
Thank you, Mr. Chodas.
Thank you.
Routine action items are listed. And. We have no public comments. Several things on legislative updates.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I, I guess two of them I wanna bring up and more just for discussion purposes and if the board so desires to take action on them at a later date. One, the first one is the whole issue dealing with tax credits. And, uh, the governor has now reconvened his tax credit commission. Again, basically because tax credits just went up to six hundred and twenty-nine million, uh, which is money that's taken right out before the legislature ever sees it. I know there's a strong effort to, and I'm not looking for this board or requesting that we start saying we like this tax credit or this tax credit. It's more of support for the commission. As you know, there's two Jim Andersons on it from the chamber. Melissa Randall from MSBA is on it, uh, and several other education, uh, folks. But it's getting to be, as Ms. Callen heard some presentations on the tax credit, it's getting to be a real problem with respect to accountability. And dollars that are spent that get twenty, thirty percent return on investment. And no accountability, particularly low income housing and historic credits, which are the two that, and I don't wanna pick them, but those are the biggest chunk out of that whole dollar pot. And so, um, and I guess my thought at some point, and it's probably waiting, you know, the, the committee did their report in two thousand and ten. It went pretty much nowhere. Uh, the legislature did not want to. I think we may have an opportunity with the new legislative body potentially, depending on who all wins and what happens. But I know there's some change in leadership there, um, that is probably a good time for the committee to reconvene and start looking at how can we deal with tax credits? Because it is a huge hit on the state of Missouri's resources and budget. So I, I just kinda wanna put that on the table, um, as a discussion item. At some point, I know MSBA is, uh, really pushing at the education roundtable for the state. Has already come out with the effort to revise the tax credit issue in support of the commission. So, you know, I, I just think that's an issue that we as a board, at some point, it may come down to this board to take a position on or to do something with respect to that. And, uh, it will be a local issue. It's not just, we're not talking about just in St. Louis and talking about just in Kansas City. We're talking about local issues too. And, and then one thing I wanna make sure that it's, it's not against tax credits. Cause there are lots of good, good tax credits out there that really give payback and good economic development. It's the ones that don't give you payback and are never looked at. There's no scrutiny whatsoever. And that's only, there's two of them. Never comes back to the legislature or anybody to review the tax credit. Are we getting the bang for the buck? And so, you know, I, I just sense at some point down the road, there may be an opportunity for this board to support or, um, hopefully support if they, if they make the recommendations, the issues on tax credits. I think you're gonna hear a lot more about it over the next several months. So I, you know, I just thought that might be something that, um, this board may wanna have a discussion on at some point or a presentation or something to get the details.
Right. You two can keep us posted. You're.
Well, is there somebody that gives pretty, um, you know, unbiased, you know, just factual presentation? I think that that would be helpful because I think it's, um, a topic that not very many people know about. And you're right, it does impact our community. And, I mean, those issues have been discussed in our community. And I, I think before I would be asked to take a stance on it, I think it's important to have the facts presented to us.
And, and I'm, I'm not, we got enough information at all to take a stand either way. My thought was as the commission does their study and depending what they come up with, you know, obviously Jim's probably as knowledgeable about this whole thing as anybody. Or Melissa Randall from MSBA, um, that we could rely upon. But I, I just, I just thought it was something we needed to get on the table. Uh, because it's just been announced last week that they couldn't, mainly because it got too high. It went up to six hundred and twenty-nine million. And that was, I don't know, forty or fifty million higher than last year. So.
I think the thing that we need to realize is that you can almost make a direct connection between the tax credits and the scrutiny that's struggling. In other words, where, and, and there's no accountability to track tax credits. So St. Louis, for instance, is getting tons of tax credits and I really don't think, you know, in other words, where's the buy-in and support of the, of the, uh, system itself? So I think we could kinda look at that as well.
Well, you, and, and Ms. Callen heard, we, we've got situations where you've got thousand, thousand square foot facilities that are getting tax credits of four hundred thousand dollars. To do a, for low income housing or, um, paying out six hundred thousand dollar for the remodel of a kitchen, which is.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
That commission.
Where's the state auditor on this?
Charged to look at all tax credits, all payments, things that, that we've been seeing down here as well as things that.
Now, I don't know if it gets into the tax increment financing and that kinda things, but it's, it's looking at strictly the state and some of the federal. There's sixty-one tax credits that state of Missouri has. And right now, if, if we stop giving tax credits today at all, we've got a tax liability of two point five billion dollars. Just to pay out over the next, for the ones that are already in place. So it's a major.
Well, I think Missouri has a higher threshold for historic building tax credits than any of the thirteen original colonies.
Yes.
You know, so I mean, if you look at the level of historic buildings, I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think, when you hear that, you just step back and go, okay, well, historic preservation's important. But is it more important in Missouri than it is in Delaware or Pennsylvania or something? So.
It, it's a prioritization of where the funds go.
But those also have, they all have disparate impacts on what we do, local education. I mean, there's a difference. There's a difference in these things. Some have a real direct impact in property tax, property tax payment. And some have.
Absolutely.
Much more indirect, um, action. What else?
The, the second one, which may be a little more pressing that we might wanna talk about is the issue on the tobacco tax. As to whether we as a board, uh, want to come out and support or not support or do nothing with respect to the tobacco tax initiative. Because that is going to directly impact public education in the state of Missouri. And I know everybody's got mixed feelings about the process and, uh, initiative petitions, which I don't like either. But we've got it. And, uh, but we're talking about, you know, two hundred, two hundred and eighty to four hundred and fifty million dollars of potential, uh, tobacco tax. And I don't know if you all know the details. We're the la, we're last in tobacco tax in the state, in the country significantly lower. We could double ours right now and we'd still be forty-ninth. Um, so, um. Guess that depends on how you look at it, whether that's good or bad, but it doesn't seem very, very good to me. But, um, you know, the, the proposal is to take it up to ninety cents, uh, from seventy-three, I mean, from seventeen, uh, to ninety. You know, I don't know what will come out of it. I know the, the last two times that it was brought to the voters, the large tobacco companies put in beaucoup dollars to fight it. They're not fighting it this time.
Oh, really? I was wondering, when was the last time it was on the ballot?
Four years ago, wasn't it? Yeah. But the, the large tobacco.
Yeah.
Yeah, three, one, they lost by two percent and three percent the two times it's been there. But the large tobacco companies aren't fighting it because in the provisions of the amendment, uh, there's some things that equalize the playing field for them. Whether you like that or not, I mean, that's, that's what it does. So everything, a lot of the other ones in the, the whole tobacco settlement, uh, provision, whenever, I don't even know what year that happened. But a lot of things happened in that one when they did that, that hurt or helped other tobacco products. And now that, this is equalizing that and bringing everybody up to the same level.
Where's MSBA?
MSBA is supportive. It's, they're, they're part of the coalition to support it.
And it says, uh, on the ballot in November?
Ballot in November, uh, statewide ballot, American Cancer Society and several other, I think there's four or five in the coalition. MSBA is one of them.
Do they have, does MSBA have a?
Draft resolution?
Uh, yeah, draft resolution.
Yes. And I, I sent one to Dr. Ritter, uh, if this board wouldn't want, I mean, it's just a draft, so we can change it anyway if we want, if we wanna do that. And, and I bring it up because fifty percent of the money goes to the Department of Secondary and Elementary and Secondary Education. And, and I might note, which I got quoted in the paper this morning, um, there are provisions to keep it out of the legislator's hands. And that's putting the money into a trust fund. That's where the money's going into a trust fund and it will be dispersed to, directly to DESI, directly to the higher ed and twenty percent.
Hancock's not involved in this and.
No.
So, well, given that we saw our yellow light on our dashboard and money, and, and, and the need for the monies and the things that we went to do. I don't know how this board could oppose it.
Also save money on Medicare, Medicaid.
Well, the, the, the other thing that, that I noticed in that report and I've noticed in other studies is that every percentage you raise the cigarette tax, you have a consummate drop in the number of teenagers starting to smoke. And that right, that.
That to me is.
The idea, my idea is that we get nothing from this tax because the amount of smoking would drop so precipitously that we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't, so you don't rely on this money. But, but if you're gonna keep ten, fifteen percent of teenagers who are in our schools from smoking, uh, it's worth it.
Twenty, twenty percent of high schoolers smoke.
And. And we're one of the highest states in the nation.
Highest state in the nation. And, uh, and so part of that, right now, no state money goes into smoking cessation, education at any level whatsoever. And twenty percent of these funds will go to that, uh, to do that. And, and, and I think, you know, let alone the academic money, getting the money, I, I think the issue of, cause there's been a lot of discussion that it's a regressive tax and it's gonna hit low income. Well, and I, this may, this sounds bad. I hope so. From the standpoint, I hope they quit smoking. If that drives them to quit smoking, then it's a positive thing.
I want that out of the money too.
Yeah. But I, I, you know, it, it's a two-edged sword with that. It's, you know, you want them to quit and if that's what it takes to, to help them quit and, and improve the health costs, that's fine. But I, I just thought that was something that, that this board may want to address at one of the, between now and November, to take a position on.
Would we be able to have a resolution ready to, um, vote on at the next meeting?
I can get, I can put it together. Okay? Everybody okay with that?
One thing, Jerry, what, I would want, I would want some clarification on. The thing that I would see in the future is that this passes and, and education gets three hundred million dollars. And then the next year, education is two hundred and sixty because less, fewer people smoke. And then there's a forty million dollar difference and everybody's looking either way saying, you know, where's that forty million dollars? And, and because these things have a way of going down for good reason.
Good reason.
As taxes go higher, you, you bring in more money. And if districts around the state are relying on this money. Do we have any control over that though?
As far as money coming in, I mean, it, it's, it's a two-edged sword because if the tax works like they think it will, we may not get as much because people aren't smoking. So there's no taxes there. Is that a bad thing? Well, it's a bad thing.
But you don't wanna, you wouldn't want K-12 education to be tied into that funding so that the legislator has to make the, the conscious decision to, to, you know, raise funding. Our choice now is do we support the amendment as it's written or not?
That's why I said, I'd like clarification on how, how it's written.
You wanna, we can get some information out to everybody and then we can look at it and decide whether.
But you have to see exactly what the amendment says. But like I said, it go, it goes into a trust fund. It goes directly to Department of Secondary and Elementary and Secondary Education. Legislators never see it. They can't get their hands on it, period.
They can decrease appropriations to DESI.
That's, that's the, 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 I mean, it's, it's back to the skepticism of we sold the lottery that education was gonna lose lottery money. And we did. All that lottery money goes to education. Problem is they took it out the back door on the appropriation level. And so, you know, the lottery people say, we're funding millions of dollars, so.
So you'll get some information out to us and we'll make a decision in the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Anything else?
I think we should probably mention, uh, Jerry, that, uh, we are meeting with the coalition of districts, of districts as well as, uh, education organizations. And that includes MSBA, that includes MASA, and Missouri Association of School Administrators as well as about, what was it, ten, ten districts? And these are pretty good sized districts that are all having conversations around Baldridge. And what the reason they're doing this is basically to be more consistent in process and, and looking at systems. And another reason they're doing this is really to put something in the face of legislators to say that, I think that's the primary reason, what I'm gathering anyway, but not for MSBA, but for, it is there to. And to put it in the face of the, and saying, this is the way we need to go, um, not vouchers, not, uh, charters, not the, the other things. So anyway, uh, I just wanna give you a heads up that that's, we're meeting on a regular basis with this group. And we're rolling it out and we're gonna have a presentation on the Friday afternoon, uh, of MSBA, uh, talking about. Friday morning, talking about Baldridge. And then, uh, Saturday morning, we're also gonna have a, a presentation to those that are keenly interested. And that'll be a breakfast type of, uh, presentation, uh, at MSBA as well. So, anyway, I just thought I'd give you a heads up because I think that's gonna come up and the word will start getting out and, uh, thought, didn't want you guys to be blindsided by that. Okay?
Other future issues?
I'd like somehow for us to discuss how we could, at some point, we purchased property around a number of our schools. I mean, I can think of Weller and Weaver and Westport and McRick. You know, we never, but that could be bond money. If we had money in bonds instead of out operating expenses. And I'm really, and when, when that property comes available at those schools, which are very limited space, we need to take advantage of it then. We don't have mon, money to do it. Is that even, how could we do that? Are we afraid if we put it in a bond issue and we don't say specifically, we're gonna buy property around a certain school, that isn't a good idea? But, um, as hard as we've worked to put money in and then I agree with buying this property at Roberson. But there's some other schools that we might wanna do the same thing. If property became available, how can we, how can we do that? Because we, if this were, what, two years ago, would we have voted to take it out of reserves? Cause we're below ten percent. What would we have done then? You know, so I, I think that, and that doesn't, that to me isn't really good planning. Are there schools where we would buy property? If so, with, where are those schools? And how could we do that so that if we have a bond issue, that there is money there? I mean, or do we think it could be? Because I, I just think we could be in a bad spot.
Is that something you could answer now, uh, Mr. Chodas? Or is that something you need to do research and bring back to us?
Well, I can do a little research, but, you know, a couple of things come to mind. First of all, there's a time limit on bond money. You know, so we, we'd have to spend it within, within a certain timeframe. Also, um, property purchases are one of the safe harbors allowed for discussion, um, in closed session. And the reason is because as soon as you start talking about property, then values could go up. You could, you know, just by talking publicly, could drive the value or the per, the, the asking price up.
Are we allowed in a bond issue to, uh, to, to, uh, say and, and reserve for future property purchases? Or does that have to be specified and then spent within a certain amount of time?
It, it would have to be used within a certain amount of time.
But, or what?
Or it could be used, then, then when you get near the end and it's unspent, then it could be used for other purposes as defined in the ballot language for the bond. then it could be used for other purposes as defined in the ballot language for the bond.
The answers are pretty general.
So you could say for unspecified future purchases of property? So that way you would get around the idea of, oh, everybody knows we're buying property at Weller and so their prices, and it gives us the flexibility to, if we don't have that option come up, then we don't utilize it, I mean, that-
Right, if, if we got near the end of, you know, the three-year period, which is typical for bonds, then we would have to use that elsewhere.
Makes sense in that. And I think one, to Mr. Renter's point a little bit, and I don't know if it's included in, as we do our facility master planning. And here's, it's a two-edged sword, as soon as you say Wilder, and here's where you want to put the boundaries, the price just went up. But it's also something that you got to talk about so that when it does come up, we're prepared to say, hey, this is part of our strategic plan, go for it. And I know it's difficult, I've been or done that. And so, I don't know, I don't know how we, how we position ourselves to, from a budget standpoint, whether you just put a line item in the budget and just, even if it's operating money, you hit a line item or use bond money to do it. I think some agility would be of value to us to be able to respond.
Which is one reason we've kept our reserve where it is, to be able to respond to things.
And that maybe.
So when we have, the next time we bring a bond issue up, that would probably be an appropriate thing to discuss as we-
Our master plan on it?
Yeah, well, we have to have facilities master planned really before we can bring a bond issue up, so.
We'll include that in our discussion.
Okay, good.
Get kind of an estimate.
Any other issue, other, other issues, Ms. Callen?
I know our October retreat's going to talk a lot about board process and how we operate as a board. But I have sensed this summer that the schedule of our meetings was just not really conducive to a continuous flow of thinking and operating. It seemed very splintered to me. And I know some of that was to accommodate different people's schedules. But I'd like us to talk about, just evaluate how we feel the proposed calendar, or how we changed the calendar and how that impacted some decision-making, I think. I just feel like, for me personally, it's very important to just kind of stay in a routine. And because it helps me to review information as information is presented, I think it helps the administration keep on a nice continual flow of getting information to us. And I just think there's been, there've been a couple of things this summer that, to me, have felt a little bit like a hiccup in terms of how we've gotten information and, and how we've been able to process it. And I think, you know, we canceled that first meeting in August and then moved the other one to very late August, and there was a real gap in when we met. And I think I've sensed personally and have heard other board members say that, I think there would have been some value and some consistency there, so.
Thank you. I'll just remind people that we have two more dedications of the New Turf on the Healthy Place to Play Initiative. I think this Friday evening is at Glendale, and if I remember right, the following Friday is at Kickapoo. Ms. Callen represented us at Hillcrest and at Parkview, and a great turnout. The weather kept us from doing Kickapoo last Friday.
I'm on the New Turf too.
Everybody's playing whales.
And we haven't lost yet.
And, and it sounds like the kids are certainly proud of it and the parents and the students are proud of it. We do need to go, both go into executive session to discuss real estate as provided in section six, ten, oh, twenty-one to RSMO. It wasn't posted.
Some moved.
Thank you. First by Ms. Callen, second by Mr. Lee.
Matt, good job. Mark?